...placement for just one child can cost as much as $200,000 per year. And to put that number into context, the annual debt service for the proposed Restorative Justice and Community Empowerment Center is about $177,000. So if we can divert just one serious case per year from placement, this investment pays for itself. It's that powerful and that life-changing. You know, including your packet, I included a memo from, that we got that I was really proud of. It was from the county executive, the town president, the administrative judge for the third judicial district, wrote the county executive a memo. And he told us, and I'll hold from here, "The Ulster County Restorative Justice and Community Empowerment Center has the potential to become the new model within the state as we work to handle that Raise the Age." He told us that the proposed center will be the standard by which other programs will be judged as we move forward across the state. You know, the county executive reminds our team every day that there's a 15-year-old kid somewhere in this county, he's going to turn 16, and he's unfortunately going to make a mistake. You know, the decisions made by the legislature tonight and in the future as we go into next year's budget, the actions by our administration to keep things moving and to meet deadlines, are going to really help determine whether we're ready. You know, we're going to help this kid grow and learn from a mistake and improve the community, or whether or not this kid becomes another statistic that we don't want in our criminal justice system. You know, if it's okay with the chairman, I'll call up Nancy Smith to give a presentation. If it's okay, we'll hold the questions to end and we'll prepare to bring the whole team up and we'll answer all the questions in one time. That's okay. Nancy?
Nancy, before you go, again, a sort of introduction there, but there again, this meeting tonight, so I want to be very clear. I don't think any legislator is against the program itself, all right? I think what we're, have concerns with, the original number that we talked about was 1.6 million, now we're talking 3.2 million dollars. I'm requiring that, I know we go through the process tonight to see how we got to that point, and then basically, I hope you're going to explain on your process here with your people, you know, what actually changed in the program to expand the program.
Absolutely.
So again, just to be very clear, I don't think any legislator is against the whole program, Chairman.
Chairman, you're so happy with supporting the county legislature and we're prepared to go through our presentation, because my friend, there's some good information, I think, that you all need to understand about Raise the Age, and then we'll address all the questions in the presentation. Nancy?
Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you for having me this evening. My presentation is going to give you just a little bit of information about the Raise the Age law, some of our statistics, and the Restorative Justice Center space. Restorative Justice is the framework, kind of the guiding principles, for how we plan to implement the new law. Rashida is going to tell you a little bit more about that in a few minutes, but it's really an opportunity for us to do some really good work, to have a really positive impact on these youth, and improve their likelihood of success. Only about 10% of the youth right now, under the current law, come to probation as a sentence to probation. I'm going to refer you to the packet that you have, and there's some slides in there that I'm going to go over. This one that looks like this. And after you get to the page after the cover sheet, there's a flowchart. So this flowchart is one of the first examples we got of a description of Raise the Age and how it's going to look after the law is fully implemented. October 1st, 2018, it applies to 16-year-olds. October 1st, 2019, they add 17-year-olds. So the top part is the pathways for misdemeanors, the bottom part are actually the pathway through the family court, and the bottom part is the youth part, which is a new court, the youth part of criminal court, and that will be headed by a family court judge. It's a very, very complex system under Raise the Age law. There's several changes that are going to offer 16- and 17-year-old services earlier in the system than they previously had. Everywhere you see on there where it says adjustment services, that's a probation service. We also call that diversion. So intake, adjustment, alternatives to detention, voluntary services will all be conducted by probation. Prior to Raise the Age, none of those services were provided by probation for 16- and 17-year-olds, none of them. If we go to the next slide, that is titled Juvenile Delinquency Intakes Prior to Raise the Age. Intake is the first and main process by which J Ds, juvenile delinquents, come to probation. And I want to draw your attention to the top right where it says for 2017, 108. So 108 intakes were completed by probation, that's under the current law for under 16-year-olds. If you go to the next slide, that shows you in 2017, the arrests and dispositions of 16- and 17-year-olds. And again, this is under the current law. So if you go to the top right, three rows down to 197 is the total number of arrests for youth 16 and 17 years old in the year 2017. Under Raise the Age, those are the youth that will be coming to probation for new services, okay? So if you look at prior, the under 16, we had roughly 100. The 16- and 17-year-olds, that's roughly 200. Now, the bottom two lines refer to the sentences. 16- and 17-year-olds, 19 of them were sentenced to jail in probation, or jail in prison, excuse me. 19 of our 16- and 17-year-olds in 2017 were sentenced to jail in prison. Only 26 were given probation. So that's where we came up with the, if you can hear the, you know, 10% were coming to us on probation where nearly the same amount were going to jail or prison. So one of the points I need to explain is that when you look at 100 intakes for J Ds under 16 and the 200 that will be coming to us, that equates to an increase in staff. These are cases we didn't previously have. So currently, under the current law for under 16, we have 100 J Ds, we have 200 average a year of P I Ts, persons in need of supervision. It takes 10 staff to do the intake assessment and all the work that we do for that population. So 200 plus 100 J Ds, that's 300. We're going to be getting an additional 200. As a result, we need six and a half staff to accomplish that. We are looking to phase that in over time, but we need the office space and we need the operational space. For all of these youth, we need to provide programming and address their risks and their needs for their benefit and for the community. The final slide shows the detention numbers that Ken was referring to. We have done an amazing job in Ulster County keeping detention numbers down. It's dramatic. While other counties have been looking at detention, we've been looking at prevention. We have been doing this for many years, and we hope to continue to do this with the 16- and 17-year-olds as they come into this new system. We're looking to do some really good stuff with them, to have some good programming, and be able to keep those numbers down, continue the way we have in the past into the future. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Nancy. I know that that flowchart is the most powerful one, but I think, and again, I know several legislators are always talking about how to measure things. I mean, that'll be the measurement if we move forward, we make our investments in next year's budget. If we keep that graph low like that, that'll tell you how successful we better are. Measurement's always an important thing. You know, it's called the Restorative Justice and Community Empowerment Center, and I, you know, this is really, I know we're talking about bricks and words tonight, we'll never get into that, Chairman, Chairman. But it's okay, I'd like to invite Rashida Tyler from the county attorney's office to come up and kind of talk, give a sense to the legislature about restorative justice, kind of, you know, what that programming is, and, you know, why we're going in that direction, and kind of talk about the benefits we think it'll have for the youth of our community. So Rashida?
Thank you, good evening. So since the county executive introduced the Restorative Justice and Community Empowerment Center in his 2018 budget in October, there's been a lot of talk about restorative justice. But I'm here to help provide a definition of it, and also to look to, a little, to explain a little bit more about Ulster County's goals and the county executive's goals for the Restorative Justice and Community Empowerment Center. So restorative justice is a potentially transformative process that emphasizes repairing the harm caused by an offense. It involves the victim, offender, and community, working together to identify the harm, needs, and obligations caused by an offense, to heal and help make things as right as possible. It holds individuals accountable for their actions while allowing them to make amends for that offense and to achieve a just outcome. So a lot of misconceptions are out there about what restorative justice is. Well, restorative justice is not a specific blueprint or program. It is not easy on offenders, and it is not a panacea or a cure-all. Restorative justice can be delivered in a number of different methods. Some of these include victim-offender panels, or mediation, conferencing, or restorative justice, or peacemaking circles, which are actually some of the most commonly recognized forms of restorative justice. But an offender, as a result of going through the restorative justice process, can have being an understanding of the consequences and harm that their actions have caused the victim and the community, and they may make an apology, or they may make restitution, or perform community service in order to make amends for their offense. The outcomes of the restorative justice process are promising. Restorative justice's defining quality is that it is victim-centered. This is counter to our current juvenile justice and criminal justice system, meaning the harm caused to a victim is addressed directly. Thus, those who go through the restorative justice process report less post-traumatic stress and desire for violent revenge. Both victims and offenders who complete the restorative justice process report being satisfied, more satisfied with the outcomes than those who go through the conventional justice system. Restorative justice has been shown to increase an offender's empathy for their victim, and it has been shown to cause, as one of our task force members has called, "offer a change." Additionally, it is more effective at reducing recidivism, and results in more cases being brought to justice, and costs less than the conventional justice system. So locking children up is not only counterproductive and destructive for our youth that are still developing, but is also expensive. And I'd like to reiterate that the annual debt service on the entire center will be less than putting one child into placement for a period of one year. So the purpose of the Restorative Justice Center will be to be a place to deliver Raise the Age-related programs, but it will also serve as an intake center for justice-involved youth, and a place where restorative justice diversion and community programming can be delivered. But it will also have the added benefit of providing the community a space to hold their events. And so the county executive has been working with an incredibly talented and dedicated task force of community members to identify, research, and recommend new and existing program to be included at the center. We have a number of members of the task force present with us here today. Please raise your hands. Thank you. And so we are working together with the community to provide programming that is evidence-based. So the majority of programs that are selected for inclusion of the Restorative Justice Center must have empirical evidence backing their effectiveness. And the programs that, that exist, they may be expanded, but we actually have not reached that point yet. As a task force, we are working to identify these programs together with the county executive, and we will actually solidify those programs as the budget process, during budget process. And so the types of programs currently under consideration include those that address mental health, academic tutoring, mentoring, job training, and career readiness, building communication and social skills, help, healthy self-expression, including the creative arts, writing and movement, and volunteer opportunities, giving those who have made an offense against the community an opportunity to give back. And so these programs that have been identified and are under consideration by the county executive, do place a demand on space, and they have space requirements. When you do restorative justice circles, the circles can expand depending upon the number of people who have been impacted and harmed by, by the offense. Also, we plan to do restorative justice trainings at the center, workshops, group classes, group therapy, and community events and programming. So all of these do have a demand for space. I must emphasize that time is of the essence. The county executive really wants to impress that the time that is passing as we speak, as we sit here, is not our own. It belongs to the children, that 16-year-old who may get into trouble and is in need of this process, needs this process to be in place, or they will go into the conventional juvenile justice system. The county executive is concerned that Raise the Age did not go far enough. Alone, it still subjects children to the rigors of the court system and placement into detention, which has been shown to negatively impact their cognitive, social, and emotional development, while increasing recidivism, impeding educational attainment, and decreasing adult, and decreasing employability far into adulthood. And this is costly on many levels and unsustainable. We can and we must do better, and the Restorative Justice and Community Empowerment Center is one way that we can. And so we know the statistics. We know that over 2.3 million people are incarcerated in the U.S. Disproportionate numbers of rates of African-Americans and Latinos are incarcerated. Over 50,000 people are incarcerated here in New York State alone, with over 1,600 of them being juveniles. And most of the youth incarcerated are for nonviolent crimes. These trends not only impact individuals directly involved, but also the communities that they live in. County Executive Hein wants to have a direct impact on breaking the, the cycle of generational poverty as the, these conditions limit the employability and educational options of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Rashida. And now I'll ask Mark Ryder to come up and talk about the building and the process of what we're moving, and move forward from where we are today. I also have in the room several other members of administration, Ms. Amy Lawson, our U V Bureau Director, Rashida Wright, the Analyst Board Planning Director, Tom Jackson, Commissioner of Works, formerly Bureau Director, members of our county attorney, budget staff, and the probation staff. So collectively, I think we can answer any question the legislature has. I'll turn to Mark, and then we'll take questions from there.
Hello, everyone. For those who don't know, I'm the Director of Purchasing. My name's Mark Ryder.
That's on.
Okay. So real quick, I want to discuss kind of the timeline and how we got here. If you look at this layout, so in 2016, in the capital program, we put 1.2 million in for expansion into the rental center for current operations of the probation staff. It is getting a little crowded down here, and they were going to bring another division over as well. So it was basically, there's an entrance right here into this area, which is used for public works storage currently. It had storage for the district attorney's office, which we moved to mobile storage unit in the back. In 2017, capital program, that was up because of inflationary purposes, it, it, the cost went up to build. So nothing had changed. Still, we hadn't gotten to Raise the Age yet. It had just gone up to 1.6, which brings us back to the budget speech for the 2018 budget, and also the 2018 capital program. We did not change the number, we just carried it over because we really didn't have a good estimate at the time of what it would cost to do what we needed to do to build the Restorative Justice and Community Empowerment Center. So we carried the number over in the capital program. After the budget speech, the purchasing department went out for RFP for architecture and engineering services. We came to the legislature to establish the Capital Project 512 with Resolutions 431 and 432. That was established for $420,000, which would include architecture and engineering services, construction management, some of the environmental abatement, and selective So just before that, again, April, I think 10th, the governor signed Raise the Age legislation in place. Jump ahead to December 2017, we came to the legislature to put the full amount of the architect contract with Lothrup for $99,900. On March 1st, we went out to bid on UC 18143C, and the bids were returned on March 22nd. In your packets, you'll see the bids received for that day. You'll notice that the low bidder was somewhere around 1.6. On March 23rd, the low bidder called our architect and our construction manager and rescinded his bid due to mathematical error. He had left out a large portion of the project, which means the next low bidder was 1.9 million. When you take the other bids together, the construction bids alone for the five primes was $2,958,880. On March 26th, the architects, construction manager, and members of the administration from the purchasing department, county executive's office, county attorney's office, and probation department, and our Department of Public Works got together to, to sit at a meeting and discuss some options for value engineering. In your question and answer in the packet, we, we discussed the items that we chose to value engineer. One thing that was left out of the packet, and, and a big amount of savings for this project, is the second time we did bids, we did not get a bidder for the plumbing work. And we knew that this may be the case, and we were prepared, we had done the research, Commissioner Tom Jackson and his staff, to see what it would take to do the plumbing in-house. So it's about $33,000 worth of materials, and about two weeks' time using public works staff. It seemed like a no-brainer that we were going to not go ahead and go back out to bid for plumbing. It's a rough savings, if you don't include labor, of about $160,000. So we also took the fire suppression bid and put it into the general contractor's bid, which we believe saved us some money for mobilization, et cetera. So we rejected the bids, we went back out. April 12th, we go back out to bid. May 3rd, we received the bids for the three prime contracts, general contractor, electrical, and H V A C. The total was 2.477 million. And again, I talked about the plumbing. So this brings us to today. We had many of the same bidders on this project as we did for the family court project, one of which became the low bidder. We're very happy with contractors that were selected and we're comfortable with the numbers. So we asked that you, you know, vote to amend to the capital project, and with that, we're happy to take questions. I believe unless Ken, you want to wrap up? Wrap up?
Okay. Go ahead.
Chairman, what was the, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, what was the number, 2.8 you said?
The first one was 2.950.
2.95 was the end number?
Of the first bid.
The first bid, but you had given a number that after it was rebid.
For the total of the three?
Yes.
2.477, 2,477,000. And then you add the 33,000 for the materials for the plumbing. We also have the 400,000 of previously approved work, which I discussed in, in the first capital project. And you have an additional 200,000, which includes furniture and audiovisual equipment and some incidentals, as well as contingency. That gets you to the roughly 3.2.
So just, again, excuse me. 2.477, 33, 400, 200.
Thank you.
Correct. Sorry. Ernie?
No, I just answered my own question because I was looking for the bid sheet, because the ones in the packet are dated March 22nd, but we didn't have bid sheets, we had summary sheets in the back, which is why when I was looking at the numbers, the resolutions did not add up to what the, the other bids were. I noticed that the general contractor bid went up, but the electrical contractor went down like $9,000, and the, uh, H V A C guy went down like $14,000 from the original bid. Did we change any work, or did they just reduce the price?
We did change some work. Also, just understanding that I, the G C bid didn't go up because the low bidder rescinded their bid. It went down significantly, and that was including the fire suppression in the G C. So it went down from 1.9, which was the low bid we had after the other apparent low bidder rescinded his bid. But we did, most of the reduction came mainly from the G C's work, also a little bit from the electrical contractor. We took out the box, some of the floor boxes. So one of the big changes is initially, the room, this room here was going to be divisible into three rooms, and, and just looking at it, it really made sense, and it saved us a decent amount of money to just do the two rooms. The third room was going to be two, you know, the two rooms with it going into three rooms is going to be too small to be useful most of the time.
Just a follow-up question. I noticed the resolutions are for exactly what the bidders did. Do they include contingency, or should we be demanding the resolutions to build a little contingency?
There, there is contingency.
But if it goes over by 25 cents, we're going to have to put another resolution?
No, there's, there is, I believe, 5% allowance in each of the bids that the architect put in. So made them add that, and include that in their low bid. There's also a slight contingency in the capital project.
So their base bid is actually less than what they bid because it includes a 5%?
Correct. Their base bid, then we have them figure out 5% of their base bid, and then that's the bid that they submit.
Okay. Could be a saving.
There could be. I, I expect there will.
Tracy?
Thank you. So just to be clear on your last comment, Mark, so each, each contract has 5% contingency. And when you say there's a slight contingency in the project overall, what is that number?
There's, sorry.
I'll let the budget department deal with that.
Hi, I'm Jamie Goddard, Deputy Budget Director. There's also, we have a 10% contingency built on that for the major components for this contract. So we also have contingency that was built onto the design components. That gets you up to that 3.2.
So to be clear, Jamie, so each contract has 5% built into it, and then...
That doesn't allow it.
And then on top of everything, once you take all those numbers, you come to the total, and you add it, and 10% is added overall on top of everything?
Yep. So that gives you the contingency within the, within the amount for the full contracts.
Okay, and that's all contained within the 3.2?
Exactly.
That we're seeing.
Yep.
Okay.
Tracy, before you took to your question, about 15% contingency, right?
Correct.
All right. 15% contingency.
Well, the allowance doesn't really count, right?
Richard, Richard Vaughn is for $325,200 more than what is bid on the project.
But if in their original bid, they have 5%, correct?
Yes.
At 10% on the original, they have another 5%.
Wait. No, no.
So not the whole 312, though. That's not the, the entire contingency amount, because again, that's the... Sorry.
No, you're on.
Um, the, the 312 includes 100, uh, money for audiovisual equipment and furniture.
But to buy a mine, there's 15% contingency in this contract, that's already included with nothing. All right, just so everybody understands that, 15% contingency.
Well, if you're adding the allowance, it's actually more than 15, because it's 5% and then 10% of the total, which includes the 5%, so it's actually, it's actually 15.
Well, just so everybody...
If the allowance is 15, whatever.
Do the calculus.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know math. So can I ask you two other questions?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm very happy for the presentation. Okay, so I'm very happy for the presentation programmatically, and I'm very excited for the programmatic changes. I believe in Raise the Age, and I think the goal of a hundred percent conversion is a great goal. And I agree with Deputy Executive Cornell that the graph that's in the packet is very compelling for what we're doing already. Says to me, we're doing a great job. What concerns me is the numbers. It's forty-five hundred square feet of renovation, and it's three point two million dollars, which when I do the division is seven hundred and eleven dollars a square foot. And I'm just having a hard time grasping. I realize you went out twice, so I understand that that's the numbers we're getting back, but I can't, is that, is that now the going rate? It seems to me that new construction would cost less. It's forty-five hundred square feet of renovation. So it's very hard to understand why that number is so high.
So I will take it. Tabitha and I might bring Tom Jackson, our Commissioner of Public Works as well. We're building in forty-five hundred square feet. So when you look at the square footage amount compared to like, let's say, Family Court or Strickland, buildings that are much larger, you're gonna pay a premium when you're building a smaller amount because you have things like insurance, mobilization, things that don't change depending on the size of the building. So anytime you're building a smaller building, you're gonna see a higher square footage. But partially, it is, yes, that this is sort of the new norm. We're living in a, an aging country with a lot of infrastructure work. There are projects all over the state, all over this country, that have no bids come back and they have to go back out again. Our CM and our architect have, are aware of those. And so we're in a time when people have a lot of work and construction costs more, and it's not going to change anytime soon. But we're comfortable with the numbers based on what we're adding. And again, after going out and value engineering it, there's no, there's nothing that makes this area special, that makes it more expensive. If we were to build it in another space, we believe that it would be as expensive.
Tommy, wanna go there?
I, Mark did a very good job. Hi, everybody. I would say that every project is unique. And your question is, is this the new normal? I think to a certain extent it is. Maybe not in terms of dollars per square foot, but bang for the buck. What we're getting for these dollars, I think, is very unique in this building, in this space, in this location. I think all of those things are driving that price per square foot. But I think it's really hard to quantify this project on a price per square foot basis. It's really, what are you getting, what are you getting out of the building? What are you doing with it, or what are you getting out of it for those dollars? So...
Can I clarify what, so you're saying, when you say what you're getting out of the building, you're saying that I need to think of the construction aspect of it as related to the outcomes programmatically? That I, I can't separate the two in terms of making out a construction?
I'm recommending that you don't, in part because fitting that use into this building presents a unique set of challenges.
And how so?
It is, it is what it is and where it is. We can't change that. We can't change the footprint.
Of the forty-five hundred feet, you're saying?
Right. So we're fitting this entire use, everything that we've been talking about, into that space. The space is fixed. And it presented unique challenges, and I think we met all those challenges. But we end up with a price per square foot. I don't think we could do any better taking all of the functions of this building in another location. I think we'd end up in the same general price. We might end up in some more square feet because we're fitting lots, a lot into that footprint. Very, it's very intensive, and the construction is very intensive.
James? Yeah, James? Question back to Mark. Mark, I just wanna completely understand. She gave me the numbers, two million four seventy-seven thirty-three four hundred and two hundred. That's three million one hundred and ten thousand dollars. So five percent contingency is already built into that number?
Yes.
So the ten percent design goes on top of the three point one?
Yeah.
That's in there too?
That is in there as well. It's part of that.
And the yellow and green area is forty-five hundred square feet?
It is. Can I, for one moment, go back? Because I didn't clarify one thing. In the question and answer, there was a lot of questions about if there was anything that we could do that wouldn't require the renovation of this building. Everything you see here in yellow is needed for just Raise the Age because probation's hiring additional probation officers. So this is the office space needed for those folks. They need a different intake area for the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds so that, that's this entrance right here. And then we have training for restorative justice and other programs for restorative justice in this green area. And quite frankly, we'll use it. Community members will be able to use it in times that probation is not using it and other county departments will be able to use. We don't have a large training space for ninety-five people. We will use it, you know, with other county departments as well.
This is something of a follow-on to Legislative Bartel's question. But I, I've understood this project as having costs that were higher per square foot, if you will, because it needed to have certain features for security, for separation of these two different populations, and because we're putting in basically two functions, not only the probation functions that you've just describing, but the restorative justice. So I think we have, you know, a project that is a higher-priced project than either one of those would have been separately, and a higher-priced project than if we had just a simple reconstruction for either one of those purposes. Is that a fair...
I agree with those statements.
legislature's lead?
I have a question about the, the building itself. Is it the facade to make aesthetically more pleasing? Is it a two-story or is it just a one-story with forty-five hundred square feet?
It's one-story with forty-five hundred.
Can't, can't he go up a second floor? More space in?
No.
No.
There's, so this building was unique. The roof in the building, at one point, it was a car dealership. We kind of expanded upon it, but you can't build up here. When it was a nightclub, it had, which it was, and I was up there, it had like a little room with all of the alcohol where it was supposed to go. But we actually tore that part out because it was like a five-foot ceiling. You kinda had to go like this. So at one point, we were looking at this project as trying to house some additional supervisors for the probation department. Our public works has just ripped out that it was a little corner where the managers of the nightclub would look over, and that's gone now. But it was just a little portion of it.
And the other one will be budgetary. Once it's built, you'll need additional staff. Is that coming out of vacant positions that are already in the budget? Or are you gonna need further amendments to the budget?
Additional probation staff? So...
Hi, Legislative. So with regard to the full fit-up for Raise the Age and the programming that we've just discussed tonight, you'll see those expenditures included into the proposed two thousand and nineteen executive budget.
Senator Archer?
I was just trying to understand, the yellow is all for Raise the Age? Sorry. The yellow is all for Raise the Age? So probation officers will be on to the right there?
Yes, so in the red and green, this is the secured area. So this'll be intake. This will actually go back into the rest of probation as well. There will be a door that cuts through. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight offices for staff. I believe six probation officers and a supervisor.
Will you go in, into their offices?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so then I don't understand the yellow or the green and red line where you're saying they have to be separate from the existing probation?
This is just a secure location, so they will be checked, they will be brought there with a probation officer. The rest is kind of a public corridor.
Hi. It's the methodology we actually use currently in the other part of the building that anyone in the secure area is escorted by their probation officer. So they're brought into the offices by their probation officer. So you go out to the public area, you greet them, bring them into your office with youth. They particularly need private confidential space. So that's why we have those offices dedicated to this area.
Legislature, James?
Yeah, so first, I understand there's been a couple of improvements or some work that's already occurred on the building. Did that come out of the original four hundred and twenty thousand?
Yes, so it's been the selective demolition and also some abatement of some of the environmental issues in the building.
And you're proposing an increase in staff of about at least six new POs, correct? And at any given time, you'll be having extra juveniles. So I'm assuming you'll be having extra foot traffic, which would perhaps bring more cars to the parking lot? Has anyone considered the parking situation? And are you proposing any improvements to the parking?
Well, let me start with the first question first. So I don't wanna pre-guess the upcoming executive budget. Based upon our initial assessment, we're looking at four to six additional probation officers and supervisor. We're gonna do it gradually. As you know, we have a phase-in period where we're dealing with sixteen-year-olds the first year, seventeen-year-olds the seventh year. So we're gonna make a value judgment. And the budget that we'll present to you will be lifted based on our current understanding of the law, our requirements, and what we believe the need to be, the kind of phase that off and evaluate as we go along.
Attorney, parking lot?
Sure. We have thought about parking. We are in the process of talking to neighboring building owners, not just seven twenty-one media, but also others, to find a solution to the parking lot term.
Thank you.
Yeah, question. In the question and answer we got today, there's, this has a call for breakaway rooms and for private conference rooms for, for youth and victims. I just wondered, looking on this, on this chart or this drawing, where that would be?
So part of that is when you, when you separate this room, it's useful into multiple spaces. So you'll have a couple of smaller conference rooms. And I believe, actually, no, that's it.
So that wouldn't be in the area where the probation officers have their offices?
No.
legislature's burnt out and legislature's...
I have a couple of questions. So just following on what legislaturewoman just asked. In, is that not permanency? That's, when you say that's gonna be broken up into smaller rooms?
No, this is, this is stacking chairs that can...
Okay.
Who can evaluate?
Okay. So can you explain the specialty security that Legislative Nolan talked about that you said might have driven up the cost of the bids? Is it, is it that? I'm just confused, what specialty security might have made this cost more?
So part of it Nancy spoke about in that the juveniles have to have more of a private area even in interaction with their probation officers. So as opposed to cubicles, which you would see in a lot of our probation area or other parts of probation that may have moved into the building back in twenty sixteen when they were considered. These are actual offices, private offices.
Meaning walls that go, or...
Door, yes, walls and doors.
Okay. And then I had a question regarding, the problem is for Ms. Schmidt, on the arrests and dispositions of sixteen, seventeen-year-olds. I just wanted to understand, you told us that in two thousand and seventeen, there were a hundred and ten convictions? And then you pointed out that nineteen, in terms of sentences, nineteen went to jail or prison and twenty-six went through probation. Unless I'm misunderstanding, what happened to the rest of them? There were a hundred and ten convictions, what happened to the balance?
So there's a chart that the Division of Criminal Justice Services has on their website that breaks those down by like conditional discharges, ACDs, adjournment, contemplation of dismissal, and fines, things like that. We don't know what, who those youth are or what happened with them other than we know that those dispositions occurred. So they were something less than probation, jail, or prison?
Okay. Thank you. And then I, I have one more question. I'm sorry, I'm not sure what's more, and that's, forgive me if I'm just forgetting. Did we do a due diligence study on this project?
Not regularly.
Not regularly. That's where I'm...
We are, and there's an apprenticeship required. Yes, well.
legislature's alone? I have one question.
Prevailing wage and apprenticeship requirement.
Any other questions?
Before you go, first of all, I'd like to thank, again, you and your staff. You named them by name, so I will not name them. But there again, I think this meeting could probably have been avoided if you, if you had the bids. You had the bids in April. We did not know this until the day of the Ways and Means meeting. It actually made, this actually happened. So, you know, in the future, please let the legislative body be part of your decision-making of how you're doing things, not at the last moment, but prior to that. It is a joint effort between the county exec and the legislative body to make this become a reality. Second, just so everyone's well aware, as was mentioned earlier, there's gonna be some costs that we're gonna have to deal with come next year's budget if we're gonna fund new positions in probation. So when it comes to budget time, everybody should be well aware that there might be some addition, there will be some additional costs. The question becomes, how much is that additional cost? The other point is that I would like to make is the fact that the state has passed this legislation. Are they gonna contribute their any cost of construction? And if so, how much?
Can I just clarify one point? We did, we went out to bid in April. We got our bids back May third. So we came to as quickly as we could, I think, the next week.
Oh, there it is.
I think it was there.
Allow, allow me to keep us going forward.
No, no, you, you just done it.
Let me answer Chairman Cherokee's question. So, you know, as everyone knows, as you can see from the responses to your questions, you know, there's this talk of a hundred percent reimbursement for all these expenses.
There is.
It's in there. It's in the statute, it's been talked about. But the reality is, if you look at what's appropriated in the state budget, it's not nearly enough to cover everyone's costs throughout the state. You know, when I started in this business twenty-five years...
Okay, hold on. What we care about is the county.
No, I'm just saying. The point I'm making is, you know, you know, sometimes you, you know, what comes out of the state cap, the property, it doesn't necessarily resolve in our bottom line of accounting. But as you know, we address our budget very conservatively. We're gonna be thoughtful. But, you know, I can, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have a really important conversation about priorities when we fund the budget. And we, you know, I know the county executive is committed to this, and that he's really trying to make a big impact and trying to, you know, change the direction of a lot of kids' lives. I know so many do support that, support that priority. But with that priority, you know, we're gonna have to think about how we spend money on other things too. So again, I'm sure it's gonna be an important budget discussion this year. Our door is open if we do wanna talk, you know, some summer and share ideas. And again, that's something we'll be happening about the first week after.
Attorney, Marigus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Cornell, as you know, I mean, I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate that, you know, you've come in here and describing it in detail. But we also both know that there were failures in process here. There were failures in process both from when this legislature gets reformed about how capital programs are progressing. But in addition, you know, we heard from folks in Vice of Kingston that there were failures in process even in terms of being able to get community input. So we, we know, I think I wanna highlight something that I said earlier, you know, yes, we know we can improve things, right? And I'm not here to go and berate you over that. But what I am here to go and say is that we have to develop ways that we can do better, right? Meaning, you know, yes, there are things that we fail to have, right, as a country? That's okay. The failure is not the problem. The problem becomes, how are we going to address... are we going to address those problems, right? How are we going to go and ensure that we don't have something like this happen again? How do we ensure, again, making sure that we don't have things like the jail, right? That was a big part of what this legislature was involved with back in '06 and '07 and '08 and '09 and '10, to ensure that we don't have, you know, problems with our, our capital programming. So part of what we're concerned about, and part of the reason we're actually having this meeting, is literally because of a breakdown in communication and a breakdown of process of how we get informed when a project goes from what's on paper, 1.6, even if that's just a placeholder, it then morphs into 2.8 or even 3.2, depending upon how your accounting of the project. These are, this is significant, and I understand this is a good project, right? I think we all want to vote for this project. But we also have to have some clarity about how we're going to fix the problem.
And that's what this meeting's about, okay?
Well, we haven't spoken about the fix yet.
You're good?
Yep.
I see an end up over there. Is there an?
No, I think everything is captured.
Hold on, hold on. Chris, you have a question?
I'm sorry, I would be remiss if I didn't ask it, and I'm asking, actually partially asking, because of legislator Green who came in here. Can you just talk through what Green initiatives you've gone through on the building, and specifically whether or not the roof has been amylized for solar?
So I, I think, you know, I know the details, the response to that question is in the packet. I know that we're going to point to, as you mentioned, that we're going to point to, you know, the particular type of insulation, windows, LED lighting, the atrium was designed in such a way to contain the air of the building. And I don't believe we see this as a candidate for solar, given the small square footage and the benefit of that.
Sure. So there's no roof work, so the roof was not looked at at this time for solar. But again, going back to the struct, like how the roof was set up when it was a dealership, it would be hard to think that it would, that it would make sense, but it's maybe something we can look at in the future. We did, like Ken said, like LED light fixtures, additional roof insulation, additional wall insulation. There will be low water usage fixtures and devices. The entry airlock vestibule help, will help offset some of the HVAC costs and the low air infiltration doors and windows.
I started asking the other day at the end of the Boise Mees meeting, when a mandate comes down like this that affects the entire state, every county in the state, I was just wondering how much contact did you have with other counties, since every other county's going to be acting on this? I would assume there would have been quite a bit, or I hope, you know, with something like this in the private sector, whether it's NASA looking at SpaceX, or anything else. I would, I was just wondering if you could fill us in on-
Sure, I can, I can tell the legislature that through all of our related departments, whether it's the Department of Probation, the Department of Social Services, the County Attorney's Office, our District Attorney's Office, we are very engaged. Most of our commissioners have leadership positions in those organizations, and have been very, very engaged in the conversations that have been happening on a statewide basis. The circumstances in each county is as varied as the counties in the state. You know, and you're, you're going to see some, some just huge projects coming out of some of the larger counties to address the problem. Again, we, we think we're taking it a kind of constructive approach, because, you know, we know that the Raise the Age law is not perfect. You know, and really the goal here is to change kids' lives and improve the community. And, you know, sometimes, again, our data shows when we make the investment in prevention, we can, all that is upfront, it pays us big dividends in the future. So have we looked at other counties? Yes. Are we in communication with all the other counties? Yes. In fact, our staff, in fact, Jamie, Captain, spoke, she has headed our team. We've, if not, it hasn't been 10 days go by without a full, full team meeting, and we compare all the notes from our various associates. So we're, we believe that we are really on the cutting edge of what's going on with Raise the Age.
Can you, can you give me an example? I know Mr. Ryder told me at the end of Boise Mees he didn't know what other counties were doing, which is obviously not a surprise to that. Can you give me an example of any, any part of this pretty large project we, we, you know, benefited from conversation with another county?
Sure, sure, so legislator, you know, the director of purchasing is normally involved in conversations with the probation directors. Maybe, Mrs. Schmidt, do you want to come up and talk about some of the experiences?
We received the plan that Erie County put together and reviewed that. We have the plan from Orange County. I'm on the Council of Probation Administrators, so I've heard different input from different directors across the state. We have a regional youth justice team, and our region is us, Dutchess, Orange, Sullivan, all the way down to Westchester. We were at a meeting two weeks ago with them, and they, everybody's at a very different place. Westchester's built in special security detention beds, and other counties don't have any plan put together at all. So we're all in a very different place. One of the comments I made at that meeting was, the more I get into understanding this law, the bigger it becomes. And the director of Westchester said, join the crowd. And I think we're all just doing the best we can to put together a good plan, because it's coming October 1st, ready or not.
And also Dutchess County is following our lead and going to be doing restorative justice. But, but as Nancy said, many are just expanding upon their secured placement detention facilities. So that's how they plan on dealing with Raise the Age.
Yeah. Look at the graph that the probation director shared. Measure our success off of that graph in the years coming up.
Do we have a detailed plan? You referred to all these other counties have put a plan together. Do we have a detailed plan that really kind of scopes out what this project entails, how many people, I mean, starting to break it down? I know that was initially a requirement by the state for reimbursement, so I just want to understand how that plays out.
Yeah, so as far as our official response to the state and the filings, the state started all the counties down a certain path, then they revoked that guidance and prison, holding pattern, and, and we're waiting for some additional guidance. And again, it's, it's all going to be based upon an application for reimbursement and, and then filling in the gaps. But, you know, we, again, we're in a kind of a mad rush to develop a plan based upon guidance. We then rescinded that guidance and did require-
But they, but they have put together, from what I could see on the website, they have put together specific goals that they're going to be measuring. So I assume that you are trying to put your plans together that would be able to meet the goals that they're putting in place. I'm not sure what goals you're mentioning about the website. I did want to say that I had heard at the director's meeting that only four counties put together a plan and submitted it. So I'm not sure what goals you referred- Well, they said they were going to be, the governor had put out a statement basically saying there were four or five measurements that they were going to be monitoring throughout the state to look at the effectiveness of the programs. Yeah, it was on the channel website.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that that's driven to an official directive or guidance at this point.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much. The whole team will be here for additional questions at the end of the meeting. Thank you so much.
Resolution, what, nine, nine, please?
Second.
Question?
We're, we're moving into the full, the full legislature.
Correct, yes. Well, we're passing committee here as a whole.
I'm comfortable with that. I'll make my motion to block them all.
We're, we're acting as if we're the committee referring.
All right, motion to block 199, 201, 202, 203.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on the blocking? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the resolutions of blocking inclusive of 199 and 203, make a motion.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, committee as a whole?
No move, by the way.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I was keeping quiet. They poke, they poke the air, you know.
At this time, we're going to enter a period of public comment. Each speaker is going to have two minutes to speak. Vicki, how many people do we have signed up?
Eight.
All right, we have eight speakers signed up. Please call the first person. Please keep an eye on the timekeeper in the back of the room, dressed in green.
The first speaker is Michael Burke.
Did you type the dog?
Thank you for letting me speak. I want to say that the decision that you're making is incredibly important one. And it's not just important over the money, although I will talk to that briefly. But we, we're very proud of the fact that in conjunction with probation, we brought the 180 program in restorative justice to this county. And, you know, I'm supportive of my program, but I was shocked at the success of that program. In the first year and a quarter, we served 54 7- to 15-year-olds that had committed a felony or misdemeanor. Fifty-one of them did not reoffend. It made it clear to us that restorative justice was the future, and that if we could bring opportunity, we could turn young people around. This is the really, in many ways, the last chance for those 16 and 17-year-olds. So it's really important that the program that you provide for be effective, be comprehensive. We've, you know, I was just at the task force for opiates. And one of the things I was said was that many of the young people that got involved in opiates was because they didn't feel that they had any hope, that there was any opportunity for them. This is a chance to change them. I hope, you know, I know that you will support this. You supported the 180 program and made it real after the model funding changed. But I just want to acknowledge that the legislature's been terrific in this issue, and I hope you'll continue. Thank you.
Nardia Bennett?
Hi, I am Nardia Bennett, and I actually didn't know I was going to be talking, but that's fine. So I just would really like to urge you guys to go through with this, because it is something as simple as doing the right thing. I personally know people that have been impacted by the juvenile justice system, people that are outcast when they get out of jail, people that the prison, school-to-prison pipeline has affected their rights. So much so that I had a friend, you know, God bless his heart, but he did, he started out being a juvenile in the system at first. And then I think that was literally his whole teenage years was in and out of duty. Then he got sentenced, like once he was an adult, to four years. So after doing four years, he gets out and he's sentenced to another year. After that, he gets out, the man was only 29, and, you know, he was taken granted, but I think that the effect of being locked up and such caused him an early death. And this is very well known, that those things do affect you mentally, physically, psychologically, and spiritually. So this is something that can change the trajectory of our youth. And I just really want to urge each and every single one of you, you guys too, to make the right decision. You know what I'm saying? Our kids need this, and we need to do the right thing. Thank you.
Albert Cook?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm a public school teacher in Olster County. I teach American history, Black history, and world history, and U. Quols. And I remember teaching a unit on the 1830s and 40s on reform, and I was teaching my students about Dorothea Dix. And Dorothea Dix was a nurse and a teacher that went around the country to her state legislatures, and even the Congress, about how the United States was treating the mentally ill. And when I told my students about the conditions, they were stunned that this is how families dealt with their family members that had schizophrenia and bipolar disorder, locking them in the basement in chains and throwing food down the stairs. They're like, how, how could that happen? You know, Dorothea Dix was also, you know, she was, you know, was disturbed by that. So she presented, and then the various state legislatures and the Congress, they put money toward what we call insane asylum and mental health hospitals and programs. And there certainly was a time where people look back and say, like, I can't believe this is how we dealt with that problem. And this, I think, is one of those times where we're going to look back and say, I cannot believe we just locked people up a mess in this country. And the faster we get past that mentality, where the solution to, especially for juveniles, but in general, to every problem that we have, is locking people up and putting them away, the better, I think, we'll be as a side. Thank you.
Melanie Forstrom?
Hi, everyone. I'm going to start with a little science, and then I'm going to get around to a brief intro. So the, we've learned more about the human brain in the last 10 to 15 years than we have in the last couple thousand years. That's because of functional MRIs. One of the things that we've learned is that adolescent brains don't look the same as the brains of adults, right? So when we ask, what's wrong with that kid, understand that the picture of a brain of an adolescent looks very different than the picture of a brain of an adult. Now, that goes actually up to 24. So adolescent brains don't develop, fully develop their prefrontal cortex until the age of 24, 25. That means they're using their amygdala to make a lot of decisions, which is not really what you want to be using to make a lot of decisions. It's where your aggressive emotional responses are. So the thing that I learned about, so I'm Melanie Forstrom. I'm here more in a personal context. I have a master's degree in conflict transformation. I studied at School for International Training, where I was studying with people from Israel, Palestine, Chechnya, Azerbaijan, pretty much all of the hottest conflict regions at that time. And we talked a lot about restorative justice. I went on to do a lot of work in mediation, and I now am serving as volunteer for Family Woodstock's 180 program. So I'm hoping for each can get involved, but it's not, it's not really the context I'm in. So we'll find a way. But I have kind of deep work in, in restorative justice and, and in the power of restorative justice. I would say, when I see a kid come to the 180 program, or I'm there with probation officers, case worker from Family Woodstock, they come in, and they come in kind of shrunken up, and they look like this, and they're kind of, their, their eyes are going like this. And by the end of that, when we meet 60 days later, when we've given them the opportunity to repair that harm that they've done, they've already taken ownership. So we really need you at this point. I have tons more anecdotes that, and I'm really rushing, because I'm seeing 30 seconds. But what I'd really like to say to you is, this is not, I'm, I'm understanding now more about the internal communication problems, but I would really ask that this not be the initiative that you need to land on. We need to, bad things happen when kids go to jail. October 1st is around the corner. So look it up, MS-13 actually formed in US prisons, not in El Salvadorian prisons. So really bad things happen when kids go to jail, I'll say that. And my time is up, so please, please support this. Please let's get this through. Let's be ready to go on October 1st.
Lisa Royer? She's not here. Reverend Patrina Torres?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrina Torres, and I serve as a test member of the Restorative Justice and Empowerment Center. I stand before you as a mom. I stand before you as a grandmother, a wife. I also stand before you as a sister of a man who went to prison as a juvenile, 16-year-old, stayed in prison for 10 years, and his life was dramatically impacted. I stand before you as the niece of a man who was life, was sentenced to life in prison, Warwick State Prison, in the state of New Jersey, served 17 and a half years- State Prison in the state of New Jersey, served 17 and a half years for a crime that he did not commit, came home and opened up a program to help at-risk youth turn their lives around. The program was very, very successful. But I also stand before you as an advisory, former advisory board member and chaplain for the North Carolina Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Council and Teen Court Program, a very successful program that helped keep kids off the street, off drugs, and out of prison. I stand before you applauding what you have done and applauding Executive County Mike Hines for his leadership and spearheading this project. But I also stand before you as a survivor of childhood sexual abuse and a survivor of domestic violence. And I believe that we can change the lives of these children if we get to the root causes of why they're doing what they're doing. I believe that this center can help these kids have a better life. I believe that we can heal their hearts, we can transform their minds, and we can change their lives and give them resources to become productive members of society and make a difference. Every parent has a dream for their children. We want to see them succeed. We want to keep them out of prison and help them to fulfill their purpose and their destiny, the thing that they were born to do. Thank you very much.
Reverend Reyes Torres?
It's all good evening. Certainly want to thank you for your consideration of this project and the program that we brought before. I can't top my wife. But I want to share with you that I've been in this community for quite a while, and I've seen my children grow up in this community that are holding good responsible decisions because of people that care. I believe you care. I believe our community cares. And to be butthugly frank with you, I applaud our county executive and his foresight and courage in the steps that he has taken to bring about this program. I have served as a pastor for several years, as an assistant pastor for another several years, and worked in Yellow Milk and Rooney, worked here. I have served with, working with migrants in the area, Asian migrants, and also have been in business, holding fairly well-responsible decisions and banking. May I say to you that the greatest investment that any one of us could make is in the lives of our children. Aside from that, I've also been a chaplain in the New York State prison system. I served there for three years until personal things that occurred in my family, my first wife, took place before her passing. But I remained there as a volunteer for some 17 years thereafter. And I saw the transformation that can take place in the lives of people in prison, many of them who were bright and had just not had the opportunities or the encouragement to do the things that many of us take for granted. I want you to understand that this building is more than just a piece of metal, brick, mortar. It is a place for future transformation in the lives of our children that will add to the benefits of our community, improve the economic responsibilities that we have. And as a citizen of Kingston, I'm willing to pay a little bit more taxes so that they can have the opportunity that many of them, that others know, take for granted, and they don't have. What a wonderful place to come when they can share and be able to talk to people and be able to get directions and be able to receive some sort of direction. We've been in touch with the career labor agencies in the area, and they're looking for young people. My time is up, and I have to go. But would you please consider our favorable考慮?
The last speaker signed up is Marco Ochoa.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. First thing, I definitely appreciate that you guys gave me the chance and the opportunity to express myself. Thank you, guys. And also thank you to my hands to take care of this project. I know that, of course, I'm representing the Spanish community, and I know we are misrepresented. I've been working with the task force in the project, and this project definitely will work. And I've been looking out and talking to a lot of people in my community. They think that it's an opportunity for us. A lot of times in our community, a lot of our kids, because they are in the streets sometimes, they commit some little thing that at the end of the day gets to get big. We get a probation, and unfortunately, after the first probation, they go to jail. They end up in the system. This project will help out all those kids, unfortunately, because a lot of times for us to bring their bread and butter to the house, we work two to three jobs, used to pay bills. Where kids get out of school, and sometimes they don't have that supervision that they should have, and they commit a little crime or misdemeanor, then at the end of the day, they send them to jail. I've been looking at this project and these programs, and definitely help out, it will help out not just the Spanish community, but everybody around to have a second chance and opportunity. I've got to leave it, I know. We all worry about money. I usually work, I mean, I got different houses. I invest in real estate. And every time I buy a house, I'm always worried how much money it's going to cost me, because the house I buy, they are for trojans, and I'm always worried about how much money I'm going to spend. I always got a budget. And sometimes that budget goes over, but at the end of the day, I know that house worth more. I don't mind to pay more taxes to get to that point. So I urge you, I urge you to, you guys, that sometimes I know you will worry about that money, but that extra little money, it will help out to this project to go forward. So I would appreciate if you guys help us to keep rolling this project. Thank you.
That was the last speaker signed up for public comment. So now we're going to move into resolutions. There's one more person in the room that'd like to speak, so.
Hi, my name's Robin. I'm an architect. I have a apartment in New York City. I have an office in Kingston. I've been living up here since 2003 because I came here to work on a board project, 52,000 square foot dormitory. I have my own comments about this, but basically I'm here to discuss a experience I've had. First of all, I'd like to say that my dad is Latin American, and his accent was a hell of a lot thicker than yours. I have gone through life looking like a white lady, but my dad was not a white man. And since I came, I came to Kingston, and I love the diversity of this community. It's a lot like where I kind of grew up in New York City, which was Spanish Harlem. And then I moved to another community, which was mostly Irish and Italian, and my father had to experience something, a trade, et cetera, and I saw this as a white girl. Anyway, really what I'm getting at here is I have helped a young man recently who was in trouble with the law, and I got a pro bono attorney for him because I could, and went through the whole process of a young man who was a very good kid, with a very good heart, and actually knew my daughter, who now lives in New York City, in high school. And so I met this young man when he was about 14 years old, and he had some losses in his life. Now, going through this whole process, sitting with him in court, a young kid, watching all the paperwork and myself couldn't even get through, the amount of paperwork this child had to deal with, the amount of meetings this child had to go through, from one court to the other, to this. I was actually his surrogate mom, and was helping him through this process that was even difficult for me to go through. These kids, 16- to 17-year-olds, they are children. He's the same age as my daughter. My daughter's 23 years old now. She's still a child. She still needs our guidance. They should not be in jail. He was in the jail. I visited him in the jail. I looked around. I'm an observer. All these young kids in jail, why? They need parents, they need mentors, they need people in the community, they need community.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you.
Before you leave, could you just give your full name to the clerk for the record? Now we're going to move into resolutions. Commissioner Rodriguez, I should say, yo, take a quick informal poll. Anybody in the room opposed to blocking all the resolutions except for the bond together in a consent package?
I'll make that motion. No. Public comments are over.
This public comment is not a public hearing.
Yeah, anyway, I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, I rise. I was going to go, just say to go and block resolutions 199, 201, 202, and 203.
Resolution, motion to block made by Commissioner Rodriguez, seconded by Commissioner Litz. On the blocking, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, on the resolutions?
Sure, yes.
Legislaturewoman?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman, as the legislator who represents the city of Kingston, which will have the honor of hosting this Restorative Justice Community and Empowerment Center, I can tell you how delighted I am that this will go forward. This is a very important program. I think it's very, it's critical that we, that we get involved with our children early. I'm also delighted that, of the placement of where this building will be located within the city of Kingston. It's near gateway entrance to the city of Kingston, so it's going to send out a message to people who are visiting our city that we really care about our children. But more importantly, as I see it, it's also located in a neighborhood, near a neighborhood that has the largest concentration of children in the city of Kingston. And what a beacon of hope it will be for them. So I'm delighted to support this, and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Mr. Lowton?
Sure, yes.
The resolutions are adopted 18 to 0. Resolution 200, authorizing probation building reconstruction to accommodate the Ulster County Restorative Justice and Community Empowerment Center in for the county of Ulster, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $2,842,200, and authorizing the issuance of $2,842,200 bonds of said county to pay the cost thereof. Archer?
Yes, before I say, I just want everyone to know that this is a very important initiative from a legislative perspective, and it was never about the value of the program. This meeting was to have a better understanding of what we were doing and how we were going about doing it. So I am a proud guest. Thank you.
Burtles?
I'm also a proud guest.
Collins?
Yes.
Delon?
Yes.
Fabiano?
Yes.
Girantine?
Yes, but again, I like to echo the thoughts of Commissioner Archer. Unfortunately, they had come to a meeting, they had come to a meeting that, you know, we aired tonight, everybody sensed what's going to happen, that they have a positive program, and that wasn't the issue at all. It was just, I think, a miscommunication going through the process, and I think this rectifies it more maturely. Or yes?
Haynes?
Yes.
Hepner?
Yes.
Litz?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Maloney James?
Yes.
Maloney Joseph?
Yes.
Nolan?
I also want to second the words of Commissioner Walton. I think he's captured it, and I want to say that I think that this has been a very complicated process with time constraints, and so I appreciate everybody coming together to get all the information and let us all feel as proud of this as we are. So I'm a very proud guest as well.
Petit?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Has it left the room?
He shouldn't say yes.
Does words like that?
He gave you his proxy on the way out?
Rump?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've already heard, of course, everyone today, I don't want to be late to the point, but unfortunately, this became the project in which we saw a breakdown in communication. And I think it was a breakdown even in the process that led before we got to this stage. That said, of course, going to be a yes, I think we've actually all now gone and voted yes. But there is also, I think, going forward, if there is going to be a desire to seek support in this legislature, that communication has to change. And on top of that, I believe that the process is going to have to be more inclusive in order for us, I think, to feel comfortable continuing to support this project. However, that said, I am a yes.
Hey!
That's not shocking.
The resolution is adopted 18 to 0.
That was the last resolution. Quick announcement, a public hearing on the tentative budget of the Ulster County Community College for the year 2018. 2019 will be held on Tuesday, June 12th, at 6:30 in the College Lounge at Vanderlin Hall. Please note the different location. It's going to be held at the college, not here at the county building. The next regular meeting at county legislature will be held on June 19th, 2018, at 7:00 PM, right here in the legislative chambers. Resolution deadline is next Wednesday at 12:00 noon. Commissioner Litz?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a chairman, please.
Sorry, your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Reverend Collins wants to stay.
I think Reverend Collins wants to stay unless there's somebody who can really get jokes somewhere.